Ninety-eight is posted in the rear of the chambers. Welcome, everyone. And I'm going to turn the time over to Larian now to introduce the draft interlocal.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. We have some special guests here. I just want to point out that we have Lanny Boswell and Don Mayhew from the school board. We have Barb Bartle from the Lincoln Community Foundation and Kent Seacrest, who's been representing the interests of the JPA and, of course, mayor's office staff and the law department. And so, really, this is just an opportunity to have a good look at the draft, working draft of the interlocal agreement. And I first just want to say, you know, thank you to Cindy for first raising the issue that it could be done another way. And then also to the discussions we've all had individually with the board members and the community input that has really, I think, helped us see that this is a really important process to undertake, to have both a written working document of an interlocal to compare and contrast with the JPA documents so that we can make a really informed policy decision. Chris and Jocelyn have been working overtime to put this together in cooperation with Jim Gessford from LPS. And Lanny and I have met with the legal teams and really want to thank Lanny for his efforts as well. So, in just a second, I'm going to turn it over to them to walk us through some of the key similarities and differences. And then, really, this is about working together to ask questions and flesh out any concerns. You all have, this is not a final draft. It's a document for prompting discussion, and I fully anticipate revisions. And again, you know, if there are questions about LPS's sort of practices within our locals, I know Lanny's happy to entertain those questions along with the city staff who is here. And we certainly want mayor's office input as we proceed. But with that, I just want to turn it over to Chris and Jocelyn, who've helped prepare these documents for us.
Again, thank you for your time this afternoon. We certainly appreciate the opportunity here. There's some documents that have been handed out. You've all been given a copy of the proposed interlocal agreement. And then there are two charts that you'll have that are helpful for comparison. One gets a little more into the legal weeds, if you will, has some citations to statute and that sort of thing. And there's another one that just has some of the basic, same basic categories that are in the other one, just in a somewhat simpler format. And so, what I'm going to do here, though, is take the interlocal agreement and start walking through this. What I will tell you is that if you re-
I was actually at the back, forgive me.
If-
The charts, Chris, you have copies of the charts.
Oh, the charts. There might be a couple of extras over there.
Thank you.
The, if you recall, the presentation that was done on April 26th where we talked about the JPA and all the core elements, as I would call them, that were discussed there, about maximum 30 percent spending for the SROs and minimum 40 percent for the CLCs. If you remember all of those terms, all of those are captured in this interlocal agreement. You'll see that as we go through this. What we're not quite able to do, because the formatting was changed in order to make all this work, is be able to say specifically, if you look in this article in the interlocal, it's identical to the article in the JPA. There's some of that, but it's not uniform throughout the document. So, I'm going to go through this page by page and try and direct you, if you have questions, to look at maybe certain articles in the JPA agreement that would help. If anyone needs a copy of that JPA agreement, I have that here as well, if you would like to look at it that way. Jocelyn is going to have things up on the screen if we need to do it that way as well.
And I just want to interject that the direction that was given to the legal teams was, please replicate as best you can the structure and content of the JPA, but without a JPA. And the one real significant directional change was to do it without a joint entity as a starting point for discussion. Doesn't mean it has to land that way. There's still, I think, a lot of interest in potentially having a cooperative group, but for a starting point, try to see if you strip it down, what, you know, what's possible without a joint entity.
Okay. Having said that, then going to the interlocal agreement, the first thing you'll notice at the top is that there is no name. And that is because, I mean, there's a title, but there's not a name for a separate entity because there is not going to be a separate entity created by this document. When you get, we have the same parties, of course. The recitals are virtually the same as what's in the JPA agreement, except for references to the Interlocal Cooperation Act instead of the Joint Public Agency Act. So then you get into Article One, which is purposes and programs. And I would tell you that this is nearly identical to Article Two in the JPA agreement. There is no change in having the three programs, protective, preventive, and proactive.
Except there was just one little addition that just acknowledges the intention of the participants to enter into an MOU regarding the officers. That does get mentioned in this document, but wasn't originally in the JPA.
It's an addition to this, but in terms of the, again, the core elements of the agreement, they're all here. And so, and if at any time any of you have any questions on any of this, please, please jump in and ask it. Article Two, then, administration and organization. You see number one there, it's not a joint entity. And so, this would be like many other interlocal agreements that the city or the school district enter into where it's essentially just a contract between the two parties. And there are certain duties that are carried out, but there is, without the additional level of an agency or a separate entity of any kind.
Is that precluded by the nature of an interlocal agreement?
No, it is not. We could establish a joint entity. Certainly, the Interlocal Cooperation Act does that. In discussions with council for LPS, we looked at that possibility, but we felt that the, if the purpose of the original JPA agreement was to simply provide funding mechanisms from each of the city council and LPS and have that limited involvement, we felt like it may very well work as program administrators in reducing the level of bureaucracy, if you want to call it, or involvement of other boards. And so, we've put it together that way. However, if we want to add a joint entity, that won't be difficult to put that back in. Obviously, the agreement would change. We would put in how those people are selected and what their duties and responsibilities would be. But the simplest form of doing it this way is to put it down as program administrators.
Can you explain what the program administrator, is this just someone that's already part of the city on the city side, somebody who's already part of the school board, or, excuse me, the school district on the other side?
That's correct. What this calls for is the mayor and the superintendent would select who the individuals would be. It does not need to be an elected official. It can be an employee of either the city or the school district. And their roles would be, as is set out in here in more detail later on, is to not just carry out the functions, but to develop a budget based on recommendations from the nonprofit that we'll talk about. And then take that budget and make recommendations back to both the school board and the city council to ask for funding to take care of the requests that are coming up from the nonprofit. And really, when we say the nonprofit, we're really talking about the lead agencies here. We're still not anticipating that the nonprofit is actually going to handle money. That's a discussion that we still need to have. But at least the way it's been preliminarily set up, it's not going to be handling money. But having said that, without some other structure to set up a budget, we felt like the best way to handle this is to have the program administrators do that and go back to their boards.
And so, it's not setting up new FTEs for either?
No more than was already established in the JPA agreement. In other words, there's some discussion of adding some, one additional personnel, I think, for the CLCs. But it's not, it's not increasing the number of administrative personnel, certainly at the program administrator level.
Thank you.
Any other question?
How difficult would it be to do that, to add more people? If the services group in a local stadium place, would it be difficult to add FTEs or personnel? Do we have to come back and review this document? Or just those administrators people being around?
It would depend on the level of authority you want to give the program administrators. The way it's set out now, though, it would need to go back to the city council and the school board. That level of authority has not been put in here.
So, Chris, it's, I guess it's a committee of just two people, then, that would be meeting?
You say a committee. I'm not even sure I would say it's a committee.
But it's a joint effort of two individuals?
At that, yes.
That would be making recommendations to the city as well as the Lincoln Public School System?
That's correct.
So, those two individuals selected by each representative would be making recommendations?
That's correct.
In cooperation with that nonprofit board, which-
Right. Based on recommendations coming up from the nonprofit.
So, I guess, coming back to the, actually, you said this doesn't preclude having a board organized.
Right.
What about putting in place a board exactly as described in the JPA?
If everybody wants to do that, we can do that. That is still an option. Okay. Most of these things that we just discussed are in Article Two. And if you want to find similar discussion in the JPA agreement, if you go to Article Four, you'll find-
I have one question in there.
Yeah.
Designation by the mayor and then by the, I guess, I'm not sure, but the, well, the superintendent would designate the LPS program. Does that call for anything that would have a ratification by the respective legislative boards, the LPS board and the city council?
As it stands currently, no. They could just, they would be entitled to make their appointments.
I guess that's something I'd like to see in there.
Is that, what John had said, is that typically for the other JPAs? For example, like the JP for the Haymarket, does it come before each respective, does it come before the city council for approval? It does?
I don't recall if there's ratification.
For the West Haymarket? Yeah, no, we do that.
Yeah. Mayor appoints and the council approves.
Okay.
You'll also notice in Article Two that we have the duration set forth in there that's perpetual, as you would do with many of the contractual arrangements. And there's also the termination provision is in there and discusses how things would be wound up. And this is really very similar. It's not identical, but it's similar to what was in the JPA agreement. And that essentially is that we can exit the agreement with six months' notice to LPS. And then, if there's any funds that need to be redistributed back out for whatever reason, those would be done at that time.
It said 50/50 in here, if it's commingled. How, you said it's essentially the same as the JPS. How is this different on the termination from the JPS, JPA, excuse me?
There was reference in the JPA agreement to properties that, school properties that were being used by, in this program, that if they were, if they were school properties, they would go back to the school district. And that, we don't have that kind of a reference in here because the, it's not a separate entity, and therefore, it's not something that the JPA might have been able to lease a school building or something. That wasn't anticipated, but it's a possibility. And, you know, under this arrangement, without a separate entity, there's no possibility of that. So, that kind of reference is missing from here. But otherwise, the basic terms are pretty much the same.
So, it goes back to whichever entity already owned it to begin with?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Then, moving on to Article Three, we talk about funding and finances. And this is where you get into really what are the, what I would call, again, some of the core elements of the original JPA agreement. And you'll see that this is discussed in Article Six of the JPA agreement, if you wish to do that kind of comparison. But the language is virtually the same. We have the same base year calculation for the fiscal year. The funding purposes are all the same. The fiscal year would begin in, or the beginning of the contract would begin in fiscal year 2018, 2019. And what you don't see in here that we are still trying to work through is how's the money going to flow? Once we have budget authorization from both the city and the school district, what we need to work out, and I've had some discussions with finance, but we're still trying to work through, what happens with a pay request? If there's a, once we have, we need to distribute the money, how do we go about doing that? And without the, without the separate entity, we need to find another mechanism for doing that. Under the JPA, everything would flow into the JPA, would have its own mechanisms for dispersing funds. Here, we're not going to have that. And so, we need to figure out how the monies are deposited with the city that are coming in in relation to the SROs. We need to figure out what kind of a process is used for some sort of a pay request, and then how is a check or how is the money actually dispersed? So, we're working on that.
Would, if we created an entity as a governing body, like was proposed in the JPA, would that resolve those issues?
Yes. You would have to make sure you specified what kind of authority the joint entity had, but yes, it could.
Okay.
The, on the funding and so forth, we talked about the mill levy. It's not referencing dollars, so there's the escalation opportunity. Secondly, how is it structured in here on the in-kind contributions that would be credited to either entity? How do you value that?
It's, well, again, this language is the same as in the, in the JPA agreement.
And I guess some of, maybe this isn't the appropriate venue to talk about some substantive changes there, the clarification that weren't in the JPA as well.
Everything's still up for discussion.
Well, maybe we ought to limit it to, what do you think? I don't want to get bogged down.
This is kind of a place for us to get information and put our ideas out there, but not to necessarily get right down to substantive changes today.
Go ahead, Chris.
And so, if you have any questions on differences, I certainly ask. Or, like I said, if anyone wants a copy of the JPA agreement and doesn't already have it, I'll be happy to hand it out, and you can see what the similarities are.
Chris, on Section Two, excuse me, Goodrich is a middle school, not an elementary school.
Okay.
Just correction there.
And-
Identifying the locations is one of the differences. In the JPA agreement, we did not have the CLC sites identified, so we'll make sure we get that covered. Okay. Moving on to Article Four, then, on page seven. This is where we get into expenses. And this is roughly the same as Article Six in the JPA. In the JPA, we talked about compensation and administrative expenses and program expenses. There are expenses to the city for legal and financial that were expected to be incurred in the JPA. That changes a little bit here in that we had anticipated the city would provide all those services for the JPA. And now with the, with the interlocal, the way it's drafted, the, each entity would still provide their own legal, really. And in terms of financial, the city will still provide most of the financial work. Since there's not a separate entity, there will, may not be as much. We'll have to see if that works out that way. But the city would still be entitled to some compensation for financial services that are rendered really for the benefit of both parties that are not directly the city's responsibility. So, there is a way of getting some reimbursement. We don't have a full formula in here as to how to do that, because we're not quite sure yet what level of work is going to be necessary by finance, but we've set that out as one of the possibilities.
Chris, doesn't this financial and legal services where you designate the city may provide financial service, isn't that somewhat like the JPA where the West Haymarket JPA contracts to the city? In a similar fashion, you're saying here the interlocal, answering those questions about accounts and so forth, that the city's finance department is going to, is anticipate provide those services?
I think that's generally correct.
I want the LPS board to understand that, too, if they would have concerns or something, or we designate LPS financial department to-
Yes. As you'll see, there's a couple of different levels of expenses. You have participant expenses, and those are going to be city and school district expenses. Program administrator expenses are those expenses strictly for the program administrators. And then you'll see something that was not in the JPA agreement, this definition of expenses a little bit. There was a lot of language in the JPA agreement clarifying what kind of administrative expenses were to be reimbursed and how. And so, this will, this changes a little bit, but it doesn't, it does not adversely affect the city or the school district, really, for that matter, based on the kinds of services that will be getting done. All right. So then, moving on to Article Five, budget. And this is where we talked about, or I mentioned earlier, about how the program administrators will prepare and develop their own budget, again, based on what they're getting from the nonprofit. And then they'll, they'll take it back to their, to each of the participant boards. And then it's entirely up to those, those boards to decide what the level of funding is. There is no separate taxing authority here, and so, it's going to be up to the city and the school district to look at those requests and decide whether it's going to be fully funded. Article Six, well, then we go back to the budget. If you go and look at the JPA agreement, you'll see largely what is being discussed in Article Seven. Article Six of the interlocal agreement, we start to talk about creation of a nonprofit organization. And this is virtually identical to what was in Article Ten of the JPA agreement. All of these are really pretty much the same. And we do call for it right now. There's an interesting legal discussion about whether or not the nonprofit must, must be subject to the Open Meetings Act. It's my recommendation at this time, though, that it does follow the Open Meetings Act. The reason for that is when you look at the Open Meetings Act, you see that there are some questions as to whether or not it's truly an advisory committee. It is a standalone nonprofit corporation, but certainly there's, it is clothed with a government purpose. And overall, my recommendation is that it be left that way. But it's something that, at least in theory, could be revisited at some point down the road.
So, Chris, are you saying that it may not automatically, but are we free to contract for that, or is there a question about that?
Contract for-
I mean, that we're free to put that in these articles?
Oh, yes. Yes, we can certainly contract that way.
Gotcha, okay.
You'll also see that there is an annual report that will be generated by the program administrators and sent back to both LPS and the city.
That was intended to try, are you talking about the nonprofit annual report or the other annual report that we added from the program, the program administrators annual report or the nonprofits annual report?
Oh, excuse me. That was on the nonprofit, correct.
Just be, one of the, one of the additions we made elsewhere in the document to assist with accountability, given that there's no joint entity, was the creation of an annual report by the program administrators for both governing bodies. So, you'll see reference to a report to participants there on page four.
Yes. It's in Article Two, number two C, Report to Participants. So, there's actually two kinds of reports that you could all end up seeing. One is the one generated by the nonprofit. Second one is one that's generated by the program administrators.
And I think that they're pretty similar, but the nonprofit would be reporting on outcomes and sort of related to CLC specifically, but the one from the program administrators would be a little bit larger in scope, looking at how the money flowed, how it was spent, you know, providing accountability on the actual contributions from both participants towards the various purposes of the interlocal.
All right. So, the remaining articles here, Article Seven through eleven, I think it is, are absolutely identical to what was in the JPA agreement. These are kind of boilerplate things regarding amendments and nondiscrimination. And all these align really exactly the same as in the JPA agreement in various articles there. So, I'm not sure I need to spend a lot of time with those, certainly if anybody has a question, I'll be happy to answer it.
Okay. Well, now is the time for council members to ask questions, throw up ideas with staff.
Chris, do you want to run through this real quick, too, to just finish it up? Because he put some time into summarizing the differences in this chart.
Yeah. I just, I kind of put this together just to help visualize some of these a little bit better. The one that Jocelyn put together, this chart, is, gets a little more in-depth in the explanation as to why there are differences. This is just sort of a quick hitter, if you will. And so, you can see what the differences are as far as separate entity, employees can make decisions, et cetera. And termination can be done by both the school or the city council, contractual authorities. JPA would have it. The interlocal does not, only because it's, there's not a separate entity. Now, if a joint entity was formed, it could be given that kind of authority. But, again, as drafted, it would not have any contractual authority. And so, and that last one says, direct influence by city council or school board. What that is simply meant to reflect is that on the JPA, you would have elected officials on there who were entitled to make their own decisions because it is a separate entity. Under the interlocal, there would be more direct influence by the city council or the LPS board, because I'm going to guess at this point that it's going to be an employee as opposed to a city, an elected official. And therefore, you would be able to make easier direction to that employee as to how to carry out the duties.
Chris, on the public meetings required, I guess, interlocal, not necessar, we don't know for sure, but we are mandated in the language.
We are, correct, correct. And that no is a soft no because of what I was just talking about. It may or may not. But that's, my recommendation still stands.
Would we also, as part of the Open Meetings Act, open records? Or would we need to add that?
Yes. That would be, I can't remember if we put specific language about public records, but I would want to do that to the extent that we can as well. I know that, that Lincoln Community Foundation has some very legitimate concerns about that. But I think that we would be able to handle those in a way that, if there was a chance that truly personal information regarding donors, that's what they were primarily concerned about, were to be released, that I think there's a way to handle that.
So, what you're describing, then, is a system in the, with the nonprofit where public money could be completely accounted for and be open to record searches, but private money could not?
Correct. And that's absolutely what we want to achieve, no matter what the structure is here.
Other question, Jane.
So, I'm also looking at the memorandum of understanding. So, how does that feed into both the JPA and the interlocal? Because I know that there's some, you know, tracking and reporting to make sure that the SROs are actually doing protection rather than discipline. And I know that was really something called out. And I know in the memorandum of understanding, they talk about the review, but the review is with LPS and LPD. But, you know, I was thinking that whatever entity that we go with, both the, either the JPA or the interlocal, there should be some connectivity. I think that these groups should also have access to take a look at some of the annual reporting with the SROs as, whatever would be permitted, you know, by law, so that they can make sure that the SROs are achieving the goals that they need to achieve and perhaps backing off from a lot of the disciplinary actions that should be left primarily to the schools themselves.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't see any problem with a, with any kind of a connection there, as Larian indicated, there is reference in the interlocal to the MOU. But whatever accessibility we wanted to give to folks to the reports and everything anticipated in the MOU that was in the JPA, they'll get the same level of that with an annual.
Well, I guess in the MOU, it really doesn't talk about going to a JPA and an interlocal. It just talks about going to LPS and LPD. And shouldn't there be another level of oversight to make sure that we are fulfilling our mission to the community, that the SROs, the additional SROs, won't be in that position of disciplining? They'll just be in the position of protecting.
Are you making a case to provide for some kind of a board on the, for the interlocal?
I'm, I'm making a case that there, there has to be a connectivity between the MOU to either, either one of those, either one.
And that would-
But I don't think it's, I think it's currently missing in the current MOU. And I, I think that was the purpose of putting that in, so that it would be more transparent in either one of these agreements that we go through, even though it references it, but it doesn't reference reporting to either a JPA or interlocal.
I guess what I would suggest is that it seems to me that the bodies that are ultimately responsible for carrying out the MOU are on the hook, if you want to say it that way. And I, that's probably the wrong way to do it. They are, they have accepted the responsibility and the challenges of, of making sure that the, the terms and conditions of the MOU are carried out. And that's the city and the school board. And if you want to put an intermediate layer in between city or the school board and the entities that would, that would, might want this information, you're welcome to do that. But I would say that, I think that certainly from the school stand, or the city standpoint, that same information will be available.
I guess I'm trying to say that the, the SRO program review should be also made available to either of those two entities, rather than just the subsets of those two, you know?
There, um, in terms of some information, I'm not sure, well, gee, I may have to help a little bit with this. I think there's some information that he is not able to get on his own.
Well, and, and the MOU says in section four, talks about that they're going to create this report, that it's going to be LPS in collaboration with LPD, and that it's going to be a report that's provided to both parties and to the extent permitted, permitted by law, made available online. So for the interlocal, there's not a joint entity, so basically it's just LPS and the city, so.
That's why I asked if you were advocating for a joint board of some kind.
I think that, however it shakes out, at a minimum, a summary of the data and that report that's already been created could be included in the annual report to the participants that is put together by the program administrators. I mean, it says right now to include a summary of the approved budget, delineation of new services and, or employees, and a description of the fulfillment of the funding allocation, but you could also say in a review of the MOU report.
Right.
I mean, that could easily be a part of what that annual report includes, as, as one way of addressing that.
Okay. I, I do see the language in Article six of the interlocal, I just haven't found it in the JPA, but it should be there.
There is not a, there is not a, a reference in the JPA to the MOU, if that's what you're looking for. But I think it was anticipated that that, and of course, the, the MOU was being drafted at the same time as the JPA agreement. But I, you know, there certainly is room in either structure to allow for that kind of reporting.
The, you retain, again, you mirrored the JPA as much as you could here. Is this, is this the time, or is it going to be in public hearing, that we would discuss things like the forty percent floor and the thirty percent lid?
Go ahead.
Okay. I guess, I'm uncomfortable with those, quite frankly. I know that the, there's a goal here to help ensure these programs work, but I think that the floor on the one, the lid on the other, as some of the testifiers too, in the first public hearing expressed concerns. I don't necessarily at this moment have an alternative, but I, I think if this operates, that there needs to be more flexibility in adjusting to meet the needs. And so that, that concerns me, especially when you look at inflationary impacts on costs for SROs. I know you had some, it's not just that, but any facet of it, or mental health, with those hourly fees skyrocket and all, but we find there's different ways in the ongoing nature of it to, to it. So I would always like to take them out, quite frankly.
I, I understand that exactly, and that was one of my concerns, the, the cap on how much the SROs could be, percentage, also the floor on the CLCs. However, I would not support changing that if the administration of this were left between two appointees. I would support taking away those restrictions if there were a board put in place, similar as was envisioned by the JPA. I mean, then you have elected officials accountable for making decisions, instead of two appointed administrators making decisions absent direct intervention by the school board or the city council.
Well, I think that some of that could be, I, I, first of all, I don't want to create more bureaucracy.
Well, actually, that creates less. By appointing two administrators, that is by definition bureaucracy. Elected officials by definition cannot be bureaucracy.
Just, I, I see that, I see that in this, there may foster more super confidence between the LPS board and the city council whereby we deal strictly with this, say, on an annual basis or something, and the program administrators can come across with some recommendations, that the, the two bodies then have that opportunity to discuss and have advance provision of that and maybe submit questions, but that, that's in the details of the process. But to me, that's where it should be built.
I don't think we have quite as many committees and commissions as we really want, do we? Oh, just kidding, that was just a joke.
Sarcastic.
But that was sarcasm, but I think, I think we, we need something, some kind of direct elected official involvement on a regular basis on this. That's just my opinion.
Well, I think should too. And then also, I'd like to revisit how we allocate the SRO costs. I just, I, that we've stayed with that sixty-five, thirty-five formula for, I don't know how many decades, but I think that needs to be revisited as well.
Carl?
Yeah, thanks. I, I think the governance of this is really critical, and can we, can we get people from the peanut gallery?
Sure. Ask questions of anybody back there that they're willing to answer.
Mr. Seacrest, could you come enlighten us about maybe some of the differences between the program administrators and the committee or board and, and how they work together? Who makes decisions? What, what do you envision here?
Having studied this, there's two important powers that we are, the current draft talks about, giving to the two administrators, funding and rulemaking. And I would just state that the two administrative model does work, but in my opinion, it's not the better model. I think the better model is to bring back what I call an interlocal board or something of that magnitude. I think that model will work more effectively for you. And I'll lay out my reasoning, because I think there's some key issues here. Six-member board, if you go with that, that's what was in the JPA, assuming that's over two. Which one should be the final decision maker on the budget and on rulemaking? I tend to think six elected officials will do a more responsible job. Not that the two cannot, it's just I think the buck should stop with the elected officials. We talked a lot about how to be sure this set of money balances with the rest of the budget. And I think when you have elected officials deciding the budget in this set of money, they'll see how it better balances out with the rest of the budget that you are going forward and need to. And so I think you have a better probability of balancing the whole totality as you go forward. The interlocal board, I think, gives you the best of both worlds for the following reasons. The nonprofit articles and bylaws already have a city administrator and an LPS administrator in there. So the day-to-day, you know, that important stuff that you guys don't want to have to be responsible, can and would be still done by two administrators. But when it comes to the bigger policy issues, I think that's where the interlocal board might be more successful. So I think you have the best of both worlds if you put back the board like we had in the JPA. I also want to point out that if you don't, those two administrators are put in a pretty tough situation for the following. Odds are they're going to be appointed by their elect, their?
Their bosses.
Bosses. So if one administrator thinks, I want to go one direction, and the boss thinks they should go another, what do you do in that? I mean, your hands get tied, and it, it just presents some awkwardness when you give the administrators that, that box to solve. I also think when you have two administrators making the final decisions, you tend to have it be totally coming from the administrative side, and the legislative side, be it the school board or the city council, doesn't have as much input. And I think in a shared democracy, I think that makes some sense to me. The six elected officials, if we went that way, they get elected by the same constituents, three school boards, same constituents, city council, three, same constituents. And I think that's a common base, that's pretty important. The two administrators will tend to come from what I call their governmental silo perspective. And not that they won't try, they will, but it's different when you come from a, a city silo or a school board silo versus when you get elected by the community. I think that's very important. And when it comes to remembering, we just need to remember, we also got the third leg or the third chair, as I keep calling it, the nonprofit. Which one will listen and relate and partner better? I think the elected officials will. I think elected officials have a tendency to listen, probably a little bit broader ears, because again, that one community base of constituents that get elected. So I think the, what I call the community partners, the lead agencies and the service providers will get more input and have more dialogue with six. Also, you got six ears listening rather than two, I think could be important along the way. There's also, I think, important to this is bridging. We talk about institutional bridging, and the more you bridge at different levels, the more you really do it efficiently, accurately, and for the best interest. If you have elected officials, there's a bridge at the legislative level, as well as we'd have the two administrators still in the, the nonprofit, they'd be bridging back at the administrative level. So I like always to see the double bridging. I think that always creates the best of opportunities. And finally, I would just say it in a bigger picture, I find elected officials more of a democratic principle model, be it a representative type doctrine, or I just think the public trusts, so that if anything does go wrong, I think citizens have an understanding that elected officials do make mistakes, but they won't be as forgiving if an administrative person makes those same mistakes for some reason. So those would be my theories of why adding the admin, the elected body back into this would have a lot of merit.
Thank you.
I would just add that, again, I know that when Lanny and I put this together, we were completely open to adding a joint entity, but we're trying to answer the criticism of bureaucracy, which apparently isn't bureaucracy anymore. So it's not that this is set in stone, and I think if, if the general feeling is to add a committee, I'm sure that, that there's going to be good discussion and willingness to do that.
I need, that's a good point. Just to remind everybody, we've got about fifteen minutes left before our next meeting starts. Cindy?
Thank you. I don't have any questions for you, Mr. Seacrest. Thanks for coming forward. Appreciate it. So first of all, Chris, I just want to know, does it work?
Yes, it works.
Okay. Thanks.
I think there's more effort involved, but yes, I think it works.
Okay, good. Thank you for clarifying that. And then I know that, Learyan, and I, I want to thank you for, for directing them to put this together, and I'm, I'm just wondering if it's your intention that, that this would be tax neutral, since we were, we've been talking about levy neutral, will this be tax neutral on the city side?
The intention is that this would be a part of the existing budgets in the upcoming year, that there would not be a tax increase to do this. That is the, that is to say, instead of shifting it to a JPA that raises revenue, it would remain within the LPS budget and the city budget, but that it would be the equivalent of that portion of our budgets that's designated for this purpose. So, you know, that's, that's, I think.
So in, in the end, it's, it's just up to us.
It's what?
It's up to us.
Yeah.
Whether it's levy neutral or not, right?
Well, no, I'm just.
With the mayor, that's.
So I'm just wanting to make sure that, that there, so does it, does it cost more?
No, I mean, it's, as, as Roy indicated, it's only going to cost more if you decide to, to raise the levy. The, the, in terms of it, the expenses are still the same as was designated in the JPA agreement.
Okay.
And so the funding mechanism is different, but no, I don't, it's not going to be more expensive than, than what's already been anticipated.
Okay. And then I, I did have a question about the nonprofit, because we haven't really talked about that a lot, but the nonprofit is, it doesn't have, we're, we're not having employees in the nonprofit, is that right? No employees. And so, and I know that we've talked about maybe the gal from LPS that directs, Nola, I think is her name, that, that directs CLCs being part of that nonprofit, but.
She would be an officer, yes.
Right. And, but, and so, but we're not, it's not going to have its own employees.
We are not anticipating that, that, that wasn't the design.
Okay.
And at this stage, we, and has been discussed before, we don't even know there's going to be a bank account for it.
Right, okay. And so none, no city employees are going to be involved in that at all?
Uh, not, yeah.
For pay?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I want to hear. Thank you.
I think just to kind of sum up that question, response, that we've all said how much we think this is a priority, addressing the safety and success of the, our children's, our community's children. And so this is essentially an early pledge, ahead of budget season, to ensure that there is this amount of funding that supports protective, preventative, and proactive services.
And we're free within this to assign a dollar amount that we would be contributing rather than the half cent? No, but I mean, it's before it's, I mean, at this stage, while it's still at the working stage.
Sure, the council is authorized, I mean, yeah, you're, I mean, obviously, the, the working groups that have spent a lot of time putting this together have come up with their recommendations on, on the way they think it ought to happen. The council is certainly free to put in whatever it wants.
Sure. And, well, and I understand, this is meant to replicate the JPA, which of course had to do with the levy. So I get that, but that doesn't mean we're stuck with that in this. If we, if through a working session, we wanted to make it a defined dollar amount, so it was easier for us, even if we put in some kind of an acceleration like we do in SROs with the increase each year, we're free to do that at this stage.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and that's what this interlocal proposes to do, is to just put in a dollar amount from whatever source you want to designate.
Okay.
And as opposed to what was proposed in the JPA, yes.
Thank you.
Other questions? Jane?
So, Chris, help me walk through that, if we put in a dollar amount, but would it be discussed with sort of an automatic increase, percentage increase going forward? Or does that have to be determined by each of the bodies every year?
I think what needs to be done is put into this thing a, I would envision a mechanism, first of all, we have a mechanism for determining the, the increased costs for police officers. We already have that. And that should be a separate item in here, in here, that we can delineate. But also, we could, there is such a thing, it's called the CPI for government, and we could attach some automatic increases based on that. And then we can guarantee that we're providing the money for funding for what's existing, and then in the future, then we, if we want to add more, we just negotiate more, if we even want to expand that.
Do you have a comment, Rick, on that?
Um, well, a couple of comments. I always have something to say.
And then after, after you comment, I'd like to call Lanny forward to just, to just give his overview right now of what he's thinking.
I just want to share a couple of comments from the administration's perspective. First of all, many of the goals that were, or many of the challenges we're trying to solve today can be solved by interlocal, we recognize that. While we think the JPA is a superior model for protecting the money, we can certainly see our way compromising towards an interlocal in order to achieve some of these objectives. But let me tell you what those objectives are, so you have that kind of in mind as we put this together. Three things. Number one, that this remain a comprehensive program. And the reason we, we really harp on that is you got to look at safety a little bit more broadly than simply the model to try to prevent a school shooting. Now, heaven forbid that would ever happen in Lincoln, Nebraska, obviously. But even if there were an opportunity for it, what our students face day-to-day involves safety that's far different from that. And we hear our police officers and our juvenile justice folks talk all the time about the non-school hours, three to seven in the afternoon during the summer, and making sure that our kids are in positive, goal-oriented activities so that they remain safe. That certainly improves their, their method of safety. Second of all, if you are talking about a potential school shooting or mass casual situation, we believe that the mental health dollars and the threat assessment officer are critical components of this package. And we don't want then the SRO program, which is very good and very useful, to subsume the other pieces of the puzzle. That's why, as Mr. Campbell alluded to, there are some percentages in this document. Now, there are several ways to achieve keeping this in a manner that makes all three pieces stay in place. But I think from our perspective, if we just allow the SRO program to eat the other pieces, it's no longer comprehen- pieces, it's no longer comprehensive, and we really are doing ourselves a disservice to the broader issue of what we're trying to achieve on the safety side. The second thing, and you, you've discussed this to some degree, is an efficient policymaking process. I guess, in our world, the thing that would trouble us is you've got two boards and two organizations with very different decision-making structures and very different cultures. So let's say we're using the contract administrator model. They don't necessarily agree, or maybe they do agree. They go back to their body, the city council, for instance, says, no, we want it this way. The school board says, no, we want it another way. The contract administrators come back and forth, haggle some more, and then we go back to each respective body. Or if there weren't contract administrators, and we just allowed each body to put forward something without some sort of conciliatory process, I, I think we'd be creating a system that would serve none of us well. And you think about the things that have been successful for us, like the RTSD, where you have a joint decision-making authority, where you get to keep your colleagues informed of what's happening, then I think that's a little bit better process, to have that decision-making authority in something like that. But whether it's the contract administrators or whether it's a board, we would say to you that you want to keep it from going back and forth as much as you can, that just isn't a very efficient process. Finally, I think we talked to you all about certainty of the dollars. One of the things that was important to us about the feature of the JPA was how are we going to make sure that those dollars remain in place even during difficult budget times? Keep in mind that a lot of our grant writing is dependent upon the certainty of those dollars, and certainly, if you're talking about school safety, I think the community would tell you that that is easily the most important priority they have, and that they want those dollars in a lockbox. We're hopeful that language would be in an interlocal that would make that strong as well. I mean, even beyond the six-month out that is in this document, should we be talking about the six-month out? And by the way, you're picking up the cost of the upcoming budget, and then you're out of the agreement. So that you're making sure that no one takes this lightly and gets out of the agreement in, in a kind of haphazard fashion, and leaves the other partner kind of on the hook. Those, and to add to that point, I don't think it necessarily matters to us whether you use the equivalent of the dollars of levy as in the current proposal, and Ms. Lamb, I think you talked a little bit about just using real dollars, I think you did too, Mr. Kemp. We can see that working too, as long as there is some inflation factor that Mr. Christensen talked about a little bit earlier, to ensure that, again, going back to comprehensive nature, that the SRO program just isn't subsuming the rest of the budget. So that's a really important consideration. I've probably said enough.
Now, we're going to let Lanny talk, and you've got five minutes, Lanny, because I'm going to leave, you've got to leave time for Larry to wrap up the...
Thank you very much. I want to begin by thanking you for adjusting your schedule so that you could consider the interlocal agreement. We certainly appreciate that. The LPS board plans on having a similar conversation to what you're having today at our meeting tomorrow night. A couple of things I wanted to touch on, we, there's been some discussion of different ways to put together an interlocal agreement. I have three examples that I can quickly share of interlocal agreements that LPS is currently in. One is the agreement that we have with Southeast Community College for our career academy. That does have an interlocal board. The way that is configured, it is an elected school board member as designated by our president, our superintendent of schools, and then on the SCC side, it is the president of SCC and a member of their board of governors. That board operates in a very similar way to what the JPA board was suggested, and I think if it's the will of both this body and the school board, to have that kind of a board, that's something I'm certainly open to for this agreement. Another example would be the agreement that we have with the Lincoln Zoo for our science-focused program, and that is an agreement that uses program administrators, and so LPS designates an administrator and the zoo designates an administrator. So that's another model. And then also, of course, we have an interlocal agreement currently between LPS and the city for our high school SROs, and in the few minutes I had, I was not able to see if we actually had program administrators or not for that agreement, but we obviously don't have an interlocal board.
The answer to that is no, there are no program administrators.
So I think, reference to, to Mr. Kemp's question or comment earlier about increased flexibility and, and your comments as well, I would be in agreement. If we are going to have an agreement where the expenditures are locked down and pretty tight, I think a program administrator model works pretty well because the, the level of discretion that they have is limited. If we do want to open this up and have some more flexibility, then I do think an interlocal board with elected officials can be appropriate as that body could work on mutual priorities and, and funding decisions. So that's something I, I welcome further discussion on. One thing I wanted to bring up on the concept of the half cent of levy from either body, our intent, and my understanding of the language here, is that if this interlocal were agreed to, both bodies would be committing to a half-cent equivalent of levy for as long as the agreement was in place. So it would not be a matter of each year with our budget process to decide how much of that half cent we wanted to contribute. We would be contractually obligated both to provide that. And again, this was intended to replicate the JPA agreement, so if a dollar amount with an inflation factor were preferable to both bodies, that's certainly something that, that we're open to. Let's see. The FTE question about the program administrators, currently, the way that we would do it is we would typically take a staff member, and this would be other duties as assigned. So this would be something that would involve, you know, perhaps John Neal, our assistant superintendent for government relations, might be the program administrator, or it might be another employee, but it's certainly not the intent to add a full-time equivalent for either of those roles. And again, I think those were the, the main remarks, but I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, thank you, Lanny. We have just about enough time. Anybody has questions, they can talk to you later.
Absolutely.
I'd love time for Larry to wrap up with what the plan is for the rest of this thing.
Well, um, I do, I, I mean, I would like to just ask one question before we move on like that. And that was just if, if, the question of dollars came up as opposed to the, the half cent that as it's written, I just wondered if there's advantages or disadvantages that you see with doing it that way, or sort of what prompted that idea, just so that it's helpful as we go forward? Because the next steps are to try and refine this down and, and make some decisions. It would be helpful to understand the thought process a little better.
I'll tell it to you straight, the main objection to the JPA was the levy authority that was going to the JPA, and I think if you define the amount of money that the, an interlocal would contribute by tying it to a JPA, excuse me, tying it to a levy, while not the same, would raise some similar objections. And just making it, you know, you can lockbox that money in by saying government CPI and whatever the cost increases on an annual basis are for LPD officers. It can be the same thing, but you don't have to tie it to the levy, which I think takes the curse off of it.
And to be clear, the half cent from the LPS side would have to come within our general fund and our dollar-five levy limit. And as you mentioned, it's up to you what, where that half cent for your side comes.
But on the legal side, can we commit future funding when you have different elected officials coming into place? I thought, I think, isn't there some hurdles that we have to go through on an annual basis? We're going to be doing this on an annual basis and reviewing and approving?
But yes, you can, you can commit, you're going to be, since you will be doing it on an annual basis, it's not, it's not the same thing as saying we're entering into a twenty-five-year agreement.
Right.
I mean, for practical purposes, you will be, but you're doing it on an annual basis. Yep. Okay, let's take the rest of the time, so Larry can wrap this up.
So just, next steps, if you have any more thoughts, questions, comments, concerns, suggestions, please just send them our way, and there'll be another working session on Thursday that is a subset of the council and the LPS board to try and get this in a more final form, to then put before both bodies for public hearing. Ours, of course, would be on the fourteenth of May. LPS board is likely to have it on the twenty-second, and so that's sort of the anticipated timelines at this stage, but...
Hearing and a vote.
That, that's what it's scheduled for right now.
Right now, okay. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate everyone coming. In about two minutes, we'll start our directors' organization meeting.